Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask that we go into a public hearing this evening as scheduled. You will see from your notifications that we have notice of a public hearing for the Greenville County Program Year 2023 Annual Action Plan for the City of Greer. This is the City of Greer's plan where we participate with the Greenville County Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnership Programs funded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and we look forward to receiving that report and feedback and information in regards to the program and how we're doing in that. And so Ima Wamadu is with us this evening, and I assume is going to be bringing us a report, and so the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Nice to see all of you again. I yearly visit you, and it's nice to see you. I have supports from JCR, one of our board members, Alan White, is here, and a new staff that's almost about eight months now, Francisco moved from California to join us. So thank you for the opportunity of presenting the 2023 Annual Action Plan for City of Greer. And what is the Annual Action Plan? I'm sure you've heard me say it several times all the time, and it's basically a proposal that we sent to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, telling them how we're going to use the federal funds for this program year, which is the 2023 program year. This program year that we're talking about starts July 1 and ends 2024 June 30th. Right now, we're on 2022. And this is also our fourth year of the five-year plan. Next year will be the fifth and last year of our five-year plan, and then we start another five years. At that time, we will come in for an assessment and meetings with different communities to talk about what to do. So the funds we get to Greenville County are three major funding sources: the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnership, and Emergency Solutions Grant. We are going to be talking about the Community Development Block Grant, which is the CDBG, and home. The ESG funding is countywide, so it's not specific to any particular municipality. That is a fund that we can actually use in the city of Greenville because they don't get that fund. CDBG funding is something that you can use for so many things. It goes from housing to infrastructure development to facilities, to a public service, to economic development, and facade. For it to be something that will benefit the whole neighborhood, that neighborhood must have 51% low or moderate income or an LMA area. We don't really have a lot here anymore. So in order to do infrastructure or facility improvement, we're going to be very strategic and targeted. Like if it's for the streets, we'll have to do income survey to qualify the area. So that's kind of how that would work. But one other thing that you must test is making sure that it serves low and moderate income area. And the total of the funds that you can use, like 70% of your CDBG funds must serve low and moderate. But I can tell you that consistently, since I've been with JCR, we have spent pretty much about 80-something to 90% of our CDBG funds serving low and moderate income, so we exceed that 70%. You can use it to address lama blight, demo, or an area in need of redevelopment, just demolish those substantial properties. And of course, for object need, like the time we had COVID, we were lucky that we immediately almost got, we got the COVID funds as well to help us. Otherwise, we would have used the CDBG funds, or if you had disaster, you can use CDBG funds for that. The other is home. Home is housing. Basically, it must be affordable housing, 80% and below. You can use it for rental development. You can use it for homeownership units. You can use it for down payment assistance and also repair rehab, not repairable rehab of housing units. Beneficiary must be low and moderate income. Home does not even change to give you anything beyond that. It must be 80% and below. Just this, actually, late last week, like Friday, we got the actual funds. So last week, not this week, Friday, we got the actual allocation unless it changes, but this is where we are. So we recalculated everything for the City of Greer. If you compare 2021 and 2022 and 2023, we actually, the CDBG funds you have so far, it's, we've got, it's higher than all the other two years. The middle ones, program income funds, are proceeds, either interest payment or when we sell, it comes back to your funds. If you notice, the 2021 home program income is much higher. At that time, we're still in the midst of developing and selling the houses in Creekside. Right now, we're winding away. The place is almost finished, but we do have a project with Habitat going on there, so that's what's kind of what happened. So now it's dwindling down, so our program income is actually less than that for home program income. But anticipate when we start the Fairview, that will rise again. The home funds reduced slightly, but still higher than 2021. So your total projected funding for 2021, I mean, 2023, is $565,745. So used in all this, talk about all the different categories that we'll be using the funds. Most of your funds, we are targeting the CDBG funds, placing it right now on either infrastructure or mainly facility improvement. I know you do, we do have the Mountain View Income Survey that we're doing on the side, and any other facility improvement that you want to do. Basically, serving low and moderate income family, you can use any of those CDBG funds for that. And of course, you have $60,000 that we have put as a threshold for a while for public service agencies. We have, we're going to talk about all the recommended agencies that was approved. And the home funds, basically setting aside for the Fairview project. You do have some funding, about 120 carryforward that you have of home funds, plus this, that will add to our budget as we walk through the Fairview housing development. And of course, setting aside some money for facade and economic development. Well, I could talk about the different housing programs we have for the county, and we'd like to make sure folks are aware of it. The first two are JCR housing projects or partner projects. We got financed a lot of developers' projects, so we love for them to apply for funds. We just, I've been committed to just review some proposals, and that will be gut financing from some projects. Habitat is one of them. So that's where some of those projects will come. It could be rental or homeownership units. And we also have down payment assistance, and this is something that is served through one of our partners, the Community Works Carolina. They're able to provide $10,000 for home buyers and up to houses that cost about $250,000. And it'll do that $10,000 if you are up to have income up to 80% of area medium income. They'll also have separate funding unrestricted, we receive from donation, that can actually help any household, any first-time home buyer who is above 81%, 80%, about 81%, and up to $125,000 towards that down payment assistance, getting it through Community Works Carolina. So that's something as well. We have the preservation program. One of it is the investor program, which we encourage property owners, landlords, who are looking to fix or repair their houses and put it back into the rental role without increasing the cost to the tenant. So it's a very low-interest loan. We really work, you know, make sure, we work with our landlord to make sure it's something that they can do and work within their finances as well. We're not a bank. Our goal is to retain somebody in that apartment or any low and moderate income family that can move into that. Besides the tenants' investor program, we have housing rehab for families. You can borrow up to $25,000 to fix your home, as long as you're low and moderate, you're 80% and below. In addition to that, we have the repair program, which JCR staff can provide you up to $10,000 or walking through our partners, either rebuild or habitat to fix your home. And so that's a grant, basically forgivable loan, in which you can fix and address any kind of court enforcement and help you to age in place and stay there. The last two programs are funding that we do provide through the Emergency Solutions Grant, and that is helping folks that are literally homeless or at risk of homelessness. And we want to make sure that folks don't sleep on the road or with their cars, with children. That's our target, families with children in school or veterans. We want to make sure you're able to find a place to pay the deposit and the rent, or actually, if you're facing eviction, we're able to pay that as well to make sure you're able to stay in your place. We are out of all the COVID funds, so this is something that really continues to help. I talked about all the uses of the CDBG funds, so that's... One of the things for infrastructure, if you get no place where the area is not a low mod and it cannot qualify, but if there are ADA items, we can use that as well, so that will help address some of those things. JCR staff and admin kind of looked through the proposals that came through, the subrecipients, and we had about $75,000 requests, so we put it down to the 60 that we have. The senior program for Need More, they requested for $7,000, and they were, I mean, the youth program, they were giving the $7,000 for the summer program. The senior program requested for $5,000 for beginners' training, for pickleball, is that, pickleball, no, pickleball, $5,000. And Creative Advancement, that provides after-school program, they asked for $20,000. We provided $11,000. And one of the things that we look at, we look at capacity, we look at the performance, we look at how you've been spending your money current year and what's going on to make those recommendations. The Gray Community Ministries, we provided them the $20,000 that they requested. Gray Relief Act for $27,000, 100, we provided, we recommend at $17,000. So that is a total of $60,000 for the five subrecipients in the City of Greer. Habitat for Humanities will be building four lots in the Creekside community. Those four lots, we have very challenging lots, it's sloopy. So the best way we've figured out is to make these houses still affordable, rather than add more of our money and add bank money, add everything, and just push the costs more. We provided them, we donated those four lots to them. We provide them with what they call CHODO funds because they are a community housing development organization that we've been working with. So with that, you're able to give 15% of your home allocation to that CHODO, which is Habitat, and it's a grant. So they asked for 180 of that and $100,000 of affordable housing. 15% of our 2023 allocation is 188 plus. They will get all of that. And then the remainder of it will be coming from the Affordable Housing Fund. None of Greer's home money will be going into this. So they will build four homeownership units. Interesting thing is the target. They are targeting two families, 50% and below, and then the other two for 61%. So ensuring that folks who are 60% AMI are able to be homeowners, that is something that we really look forward. I'm very excited working with them to do that. A small business loan is still available, $25,000, small business. The facade program is also still available as well, so $5,000 for that, for any business owner who wants to fix the exterior of their business. Fairview project. I want to really thank the planning commissioners, all of you, the county council, your planning staff, your zoning staff, your administration, all of you, engineering, everybody worked so hard to work with us to get this project going. The zoning and planning subdivision approval site plan went smoothly. It's, I've never seen it go so fast and all going through development process. And that helped us to be able to finish the infrastructure improvement at once. We wanted, we thought we were going to do it on two phases. It came up that we were able to get the funding, county, use some of county ARP money to add to what we have. So we're able to complete the infrastructure, all the utility lines, water, sewer, everything, so we didn't have to face one and two. So those two were done. Roads in place, lighting in place, the lots are there. So we're actually getting ready to do the final subdivision plot recorded and working with the architects to bid this project. The goal is for us to have the income to range from 50% AMI to 100% AMI. Nobody's going to know who is who, wherever, what income and everything. The three-bedroom, two baths, 1,400, almost close to 1,400 or 13,5 square foot. The bedrooms are big, not the bathrooms. The middle unit's a little different from the end unit because of how it is. We will build the first phase. The goal is to build the first phase, and the first phase will be close to that little loop around. That will be 14 units. Two buildings of four townhomes and one six unit. So two buildings of four, just eight of those and the other six, so eight, 14. And then the goal is sell those and start on the other second phase, the 19 units. We want to be able to finish this once we start, be able to finish this in two, three years, have all the occupation, everybody occupied instead of dragging the process because that number one thing is the townhome. So we want to be able to finish this. We want to be able to show and ensure the community what we promised them when we met with them a couple of years, when they all talked about they don't have affordable housing in the community. So even with Creeks Hill, purchasing the property, working, like introducing us to Creeks Hill, having the patience to wait for us to go through this was amazing for this project to come through this way. These were some of the elevation and floor plans that we plan to have, the four-unit townhomes, the six, and then the other ones as well. Goal is the bids will be going out end of March to April. Before the end of this fiscal year, we should have bids in place for us to finalize the construction, the construction cost. We only just have estimates, but we don't want to push the estimates until we know what the bids, how the bids are coming. So, that's it. If you have any questions on any other things. Also, comments can also be sent through the email we have there as well. Thank you.
I have one question for you. You mentioned that the rental property for landlords, it was some type of assistance program, and how much is available to each one of those, and what type of commitment do they have to make? Is it if we give you a certain amount of dollars, you have to stay inside the program and keep it low to moderate income for two to three years, or how does that work?
The landlords are able to get $25,000 per unit, per building, per unit, and the goal is really keeping it affordable. I believe we have five-year affordability, not to exceed 10-year affordability period for those, right? So depending on what you borrow.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We appreciate your efforts and the updates and keeping us informed. We're in what is apparently an ever-tightening circle in terms of the financing. We're always glad to hear that we do have program income and have those funds to be available for some of our local efforts as well, too, and that's always gratifying. And we thank you for managing this portion of the program for us. So with that, as you may have seen there on the screen, you can offer comments by email, or they can be sent as well to the Executive Director of the Greenville County Redevelopment, attention to John Castile there at University Ridge. This has been a public hearing. Counsel, anything else in regards to the public hearing? If not, I will draw it to a close. And so with that, would anyone here this evening wish to speak in regards to the notice of the public hearing for the Greenville County Program Year 2023 Annual Action Plan for the City of Greer? If so, raise your hand, please. Seeing none, I will ask a second time. Is there anyone here that would like to offer comment or question in regards to the public hearing for the Greenville County Program Year 2023 Annual Action Plan by the City of Greer? If so, indicate by raising your hand. The record shall reflect that upon the second ask, no one indicated so. And for a third and final time in a public hearing, notice of the public hearing for the Greenville County Program Year 2023 Annual Action Plan for the City of Greer, which we have just heard, would anyone like to offer comment in regards to the public hearing? A show of hand? Last call. Record will indicate that three offerings were made. No one indicated that they chose to do so. We will close the public hearing portion of our meeting, and with that, we'll move on to the rest of our meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask if you would to join us in a pledge of allegiance by standing and then an invocation offered after that for counsel.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I invite you to join us in prayer. Lord, as we come as humble servants before you this evening, we ask that you give us insight and understanding and grace as we consider the matters before us this evening. As we have heard about one of these programs that assists with housing and funding for programs that are so critical to our community, I pray that utmost and foremost, we would realize that we represent all of the citizens of this city. And that means those from those that have the least to those that have the most. And help us to always be mindful of those in our community that lack the resources to enjoy a quality of life that we would like to see them lead, and help us to always be mindful of these efforts as we seek to provide for young and old. We ask now that you be with us through the rest of this meeting, that as we consider the items on the agenda before us, that we will act in the best behalf of those residents of the City of Greer, that it may be stronger and more vibrant in many ways, and that we will offer you praise for those blessings. Christ name, we pray. Amen. We offer a time of public forum, a chance for folks to address counsel. Ms. Duncan, anyone to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
Counsel, with that, we will move to the minutes of the council meeting that are contained in your packet. That would be the meeting on February the 28th, 2023. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
End of session. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, and with respect to our agenda, I want to take a minute to deviate just a bit. Ms. Martin, I believe you're here with us this evening. And Mrs. Martin will join us, apparently, so.
I don't understand. We've been doing this for quite some time. Is that right?
Thank you so much.
Well, great. We're going to offer a proclamation tonight in regards to the National Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month. It reads as such, "I, Rick Danner, Mayor of the City of Greer, am proud to commemorate March 2023 as Bleeding Disorder Awareness Month in the state of South Carolina. And whereas this designation will formalize and expand upon the designation 37 years ago as of March 1986, this is a Bleeding Awareness Month by President Ronald Reagan. And whereas the Federal Department of Health and Human Services designated March 2016 as National Bleeding Disorders Month. And whereas these bleeding disorders which share the inability to form a proper blood clot are characterized by extended bleeding after injury, surgery, trauma, or menstruation, and can lead to significant mortality, and can be fatal if not treated effectively. Whereas many individuals with hemophilia of the teens become infected with HIV and hepatitis C in non-teen ages due to contamination of blood supply and blood products. And whereas this Awareness Month will foster a greater sense of community and shared purpose among individuals with all inheritable bleeding disorders, this Awareness Month will elevate awareness and engagement in the inheritable bleeding disorders journey beyond our community and general public, enabling the prevention of illness, unnecessary procedures, and disability. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim the month of March 2023 as Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month, and the City of Greer presents you with this proclamation." Thank you. Would you like to say any names?
Just, I am the executive director of the state's own nonprofit. We serve the entire state of South Carolina. We have, in our membership, probably close to 500 or 600 people that have a bleeding disorder that we care for. We wrap our arms around and serve that with financial aid, scholarships, and education, and frankly, support. I am a mother through Chilwell Hemophilia. I am a carrier, it's a genetic disorder. I did know I carried the gene, and I passed it on to my three sons. They do very well, but it's a very difficult disease to live with, and this is our special month. We were just in Washington raising awareness in the state capital, and I just want to thank the City of Greer where we live, and we love the City of Greer for taking the time out tonight to recognize this disease and all the people that are affected by it. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. You're just kind of great. Thank you. Can you take a picture for us, please, one?
I can, I can.
Here, we got it.
It may take me...
Got it.
Okay, I was going to say, I might take this forever.
Thank you.
I can't wait. It's like following me all the time.
All right. If they were in selfie mode, come back.
We're very excited about that. And as always, mark your calendar for a very popular event that we host annually, it's egg-tastic. This will be held Saturday, April 1st, from 10 to 12 in Greer City Park. But most, not only that, and a number of other issues and announcements can be found on the city's website, including opportunities to volunteer in your community. So look forward to, hopefully, we get a lot of volunteers through that process. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, I would urge you to follow closely our calendar. I was looking at mine this afternoon. We have a number of events coming up over the next couple of months. Lots of opportunities to celebrate things that are going on in our community, particularly as we get here with the, the event, the international group that will be meeting here, a big opportunity for us. We will have another group, a different group, that's going to have a little bit longer and more in-depth international meeting as part of their ongoing programming in Greenville. And International Festival will be taking place as well as some other events. So please keep abreast of those, a lot going on this spring, particularly here in, here in the park. With that then, counsel, let's move to appointments of boards and commissions. This evening we have two, and you should have a biographical sketch. I'm going to start with this one because we've got a biographical sketch to consider, and then we may look at another matter, but biographical sketch for a recreation association board of trustees opening. And Mr. Booker, you want to tell us about that, please, sir?
Yeah, first, I want to thank Dr. Chris Strobel on her time that she served. Again, I just want to remind everyone, she, she, she runs the Teen Moms Anonymous program here in Greer, and she's focusing on her how to get teen moms to graduate research in her book that she just published. So she's doing great with that. But tonight I got another homegrown, Greer homegrown individual. His name is Brandon Coleman. He serves as the Performing Orchestra Director for the Phyllis Wheatley Community Center. He is a USC Upstate graduate, has a bachelor's degree in computer science, M B A, and he's a doctoral candidate for Christian Counseling at N C A A. He serves at Safe Place Church as a minister of music, he's a part of Capa League, he serves on the board for the Chapman Foundation, and I respectfully ask for your consideration tonight, and I think he'd be a great candidate for, for this position.
Comes as a motion to hear a second?
Second.
Floor is open for discussion or questions? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, you'll see the first item of, under appointments of boards and commissions is the Greer Trust Board of Commissioners. This is the, the board that serves us in regards to the financing on this building and others that were, that was done when we built the park and courthouse and did the renovation, this building and the renovations at the jail. Those commissioners meet at least annually to, to guide us in regards to the financing on that building. And Mark Thornton was a member of that commission, he has sadly passed, and so we have an opening on that commission. And I believe that Mr. Arrowood would like to propose somebody to fill that seat, and we may not have a, may not have a bio, but I want to turn it over to you, Mr. Arrowood, Councilman Arrowood.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, I apologize for not having a biographical sketch, but I believe most of you are familiar with the, this individual. Mr. Griffin, who's sat here with us for years, Mr. Wayne Griffin, he, he not only served our city for many years in different capacities, but he is, he came to my mind when I knew that we would have to fill Mark's position, and I was fortunate enough to be able to nominate Mark and call him a friend. And Mr. Griffin, I'm fortunate enough to nominate him and also call him a friend. He is, whatever he does, he represents well, he represents like a bulldog. And so I wholeheartedly make this as a motion and ask your consideration to, to approve him for this open position.
Comes as a recommendation or motion to hear a second?
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, on to new business. We only have two items this evening, and the first of which is the first reading of ordinance number three dash 2023. This is an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of certain real property in the City of Greer. Mr. Mayorman?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, there is a very small alleyway that runs between, well, beside the, the Wild Ace Pizza Restaurant behind us and the, the adjacent buildings that are owned all now by the same owner. The applicant has requested that we close that alleyway so they can expand the business to allow for further investment in the area. And this, this ordinance here is, reflects that request and staff's recommendation that the alley be closed.
Counsel, the recommendation for the purpose of discussion, do I hear a motion to receive?
Motion.
Motion is second. Floor is open for discussion. Comments? The expansion will be done by whom?
The, the building owner. The building owner will be connected. As I understand, the building plan now includes an expansion of Wild Ace.
Mr. Mayorman?
Yes, sir.
The reality is, there's zero functional use or for, for the property, as is anyway.
That's exactly right. Yeah, and I, I need to, I will stress that as required, and you can see in, in the conveyance of the deed, that the easements that exist will remain in place, but the actual alleyway itself is what we are issuing a quitclaim deed for.
Others? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Second item of new business is the first reading of ordinance number four dash 2023. This is an ordinance authorizing the City of Greer to enter into an agreement with the County of Spartanburg, providing for fire service and financial arrangements for properties located in the Duncan Fire Service area. Mr. Mayorman?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, this is one of those issues, instances that happen fairly rarely, but does, needs to be addressed specifically, and it's in partnership with Spartanburg County and addressing the tax bill with the auditor on a, on four pieces of property located in the Duncan Fire District. When the city annexed those properties, they had, the, the county had issued debt as part of a larger Duncan Fire Service project. The city, the auditor needs authorization from the county, or from the city, excuse me, to remove that millage from the tax bills and replace it with the city's millage. But in so doing, we are obligated to pay that proportionate share of the debt on those parcels which comes to two-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars annually in total. So we will, we will continue to serve those properties, but in order to clean up the tax bills for those properties, we need to formally enter into this agreement with Spartanburg County so the auditor can take action.
Counsel, the recommendation from staff for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive. I'm a, end of second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, we have no items in executive session. We stand adjourned.